I'm verifying we're live on Facebook, guys. If you're, as soon as I verify, we officially, it says we are live, so I'm just verifying. Starting the program soon. Yes, we're live. Salaam aleikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you for joining us in another Care Florida Lunch Hour in our Elections 2020 Edition. This is another program we're hosting, this time with one of, of a candidate. That is a young professional woman from South Florida. Her name is Nor Fossey. And she's running for the Coral Springs City Commission seat. We will be learning about her, what she has done in her career. How is her experience running as a female, young minority candidate here in South Florida? What challenges she has, she's still probably facing or will be facing if she wins? And to tell us about how her city is run, is run and the, and the projects that she may have that might be of the interest of our community and our audience. So, welcome, Nor, and welcome also to Norma. Norma Henning is our Government Affairs Coordinator. She's an attorney and she will be also co-hosting this program. Norma.
Hello, everyone, and welcome, welcome to our lunch session. So, we're very looking forward to chatting with Nor. And I guess my first question to Nor would be, have you always been interested in politics? Or what made you interested in, and talk a little bit about your background? I mean, you have leadership experience, but you know, I didn't see politics, so.
Yeah, so I've always had an interest in politics, even if it was just reading about politics or talking with my friends about politics. I'll be honest with you, I would have never believed, you know, that I would one day run to represent, you know, the city of Coral Springs. I moved to the city when I was nine years old. I think all I cared about back then was basketball. But as I got older, I developed a love and an appreciation for the city. And I feel like I have a really good grasp on, you know, what's going on and feel that I'm fully capable to really help Coral Springs take the lead on many of the issues that not only face Coral Springs, but other municipalities. And I think that kind of leadership is needed in this city. And feel that I'm fully capable to really.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, thank you. Sorry, there was an echo. I was, I was finished to you, list, finished listening to you. So, city council, then basically you're, you know, a hometown girl, grown up in the city and, you know, care about the community and, and decided to join city council. So, how many city council person, oh, I'm sorry, I keep calling it a council because I'm confused. We're on my side of the state, we call them city councils. So, is this the same thing, city commission, same thing?
Yeah, people tend to talk about the same thing when they say council versus commission. There might be some variations in, in how the commission is run and how it runs the city. But for the most part, the council or the commission is really like the governing body for the city. But yeah, here in Coral Springs, we call the commission, yeah.
And how, how many members are there?
So, we have a mayor and four commissioners, and they all have voting power. The mayor to me is like a ceremonial figure in the city, but, but he does have voting power. And his voting power is equal to that of the commissioners.
Okay.
There are some cities, Nor, that where the mayor is selected among the commissioners and on other cities where people directly elect the mayor to deposition of mayor, right? How, how does Coral Springs work?
Yeah, so in Coral Springs, the mayoral position is an elected position. The mayor will serve two-year terms. And so every two years, you know, the mayor will be up for election as long as he or she is challenged. You know, it, there was a case here in Coral Springs where our former mayor passed away, bless his heart. And at that point, you know, we had to figure out whether we wanted to appoint someone to serve as an interim mayor or if we just wanted to move ahead and have an election, and we decided that we were gonna have an election.
Interesting. Nor, and, and what, what, tell us a little bit about yourself, your, 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 your education and your, your work experience for those who don't know you.
Sure. So, I attended Florida Atlantic University in Boca Raton, Florida. I majored in political science. At that point, you know, I had to decide, you know, do I want to go into diplomacy, which was, you know, one of my interests, or law school? And I felt like law school was the more practical option. So, I went to law school, I attended law school at Florida International University College of Law. I got my JD, took the bar exam, and now I work as a civil litigation attorney at one of the statewide law firms here in South Florida.
So, you're, you're not, you're not afraid of a little debate?
No, not at all. It's, it's kind of cutthroat, so you have to, you have to be prepared, but it does teach you to be strong. So, I, I really appreciate the experience that comes with being a litigator.
And how many, how many co-competitors do you have? And is there debate? Did you guys engage in debate?
At this point, there haven't been any candidate forums or debates because, you know, the seat that I'm running for is not a, it's a nonpartisan seat and there's no primary election. So, my election is in November 3rd. It seems like everyone's kind of waiting to get the primary elections out of the way before they start inviting, you know, city candidates out to forums and things like that.
Except we, we're different, we just, we just want to.
But you're different. Yeah, care's different.
But, so anyway, actually, this as a side note, you know, care, we are 501(c)(3) nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse any particular candidate. So, we invited everyone who was running for this race. Unfortunately, the others, you know, didn't respond to us in time to properly advertise the flyers. So, we're having another event on Monday with some of your co-competitors or candidates running for the same seat. So, I don't know if you want to tune in again or just listen, but we're looking forward to hearing from, from everyone so that the city, you know, we can fulfill our mission to basically inform the community of their options and just really hear what's on candidates' minds and how they feel like they can make a difference. What are the major issues in Coral Springs that you would like to be a part of?
Yeah, so I would say that there's three main issues. I think that the economy by and large is the most important issue facing the residents of Coral Springs, especially in light of the pandemic. One of the more immediate issues that we have to face as a city is a $5 million budget shortfall that we're gonna have to figure out. I think we have a, we have a big budget, you know, Coral Springs is a large city. So, I think that as long as the commissioners are keeping a watchful eye over how money is spent, then, you know, we can figure out how to address that shortfall without necessarily having to raise taxes on the residents. You know, infrastructure is very important in Coral Springs. Like I said, this is a large city. We have more than 130,000 people living in the city. And, you know, with time, the, the condition of the infrastructure starts to catch up on you. So, I think that we need some, some major infrastructure reform in Coral Springs. My campaign is actually proposing or going to propose an alternative street design for the city that will not only decrease traffic at our intersections, but that will also promote safer roads. So, infrastructure is also very important. And then mental health is also extremely important here in Coral Springs. You know, especially in light of what happened at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas and, and also in light of the pandemic. I mean, a lot of people are on edge and, you know, it's okay to feel that way. I think a lot of us are in that boat. But if we want to achieve violence prevention, which I think is certainly achievable, then, you know, we have to start with our youth and, you know, we have to teach young people how to respond to the kinds of, you know, thoughts that lead one to either, you know, harm themselves or others. And so, one of the big proposals that we're making is to implement cognitive behavioral therapy in the schools and to make it a required part of the K through 12 curriculum. If you can teach young people how to respond to these negative thought patterns, then you can achieve violence prevention. And if that wasn't true, then our mental health professionals would not now be writing about it.
Is that possible in the city, from the city government, or does that take county? I don't know how does that work there with the interrelationship?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I certainly would want to get the county and the state involved because, you know, this is gonna cost, you know, money. And, you know, I think that the state will certainly be able to help out with that. I think everybody needs to be involved if, if we want to come up with a, with a comprehensive solution to, you know, achieve violence prevention. So, other than that, I just, I don't see it being an issue trying to get it implemented. It's also a school issue, so that, you know, the school board has to get involved and weigh in. And, but other than that, I think this, this is certainly achievable.
Nor, I, 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 I'm sorry to interrupt, Norma. I have a question for you here. Do you, you know that the, the police reform topic, the racial justice issue that is so prevalent in, in, in today's public square discussion? Is it part of the discussion among you candidates and, and, and the correlation of you and what you will, you will be offering your, your constituents? Because everybody's worried, I believe, that what, in, in the number one priorities, people are worried about their health and their lives with the pandemic. But after that, the, the social justice, I believe, will come in a close second. And racial justice and police reform, how's the city in that discussion?
Well, the candidates and I have certainly been asked about the issue of, of police reform. And, you know, we're not only having discussions about it here in the city, but just recently, the city had established a task force to, you know, review police policies and figure out, you know, how we could improve the way that policing is done so that, you know, we can make sure that police officers are exercising the appropriate level of care and, and how they deal with residents day-to-day. You know, my position is, is pretty simple. There's always room for improvement. We just need to make sure that any proposals that are being put out there are being put by people who have some kind of law enforcement experience, whether they're police officers or even social workers and mental health professionals, which are also in the field working with, with police officers. So, we need to make sure that the right people, we have the right people out there pushing for the, the right kinds of reforms. And the right kinds of reforms are gonna be the ones that are specific to the needs of the city and not necessarily influenced by what may be happening outside of the city. But I think that the police department should on its own, without necessarily being prompted by anyone, conduct a regular review of their policies and procedures to make sure that nothing is left out and that, that they are exercising the appropriate level of care and, and their day-to-day dealings with the residents.
Is there, is there any claim at present from the residents to, to, to be a part, an active participant on that relation with the police and not being a passive participant? Where we just, they just learn again how the police self-reform or self-approach their problems or self, what is worse, self-police themselves? You see?
Yeah.
And, and that is, and that delicate balance i- is what is at stake in this broader discussion of racial justice and law enforcement and the correlation of law enforcement with the community. You, when I complain about police, it ends up on you investigating yourself and, and rarely taking action that is significant, not only in the discipline part, but to proactively transform. Because I believe what the people are looking for is for a transformation of that police-citizen relation for, for the police to really be felt as an employee of the taxpayers, not as an oppressor of the taxpayers who paid, ironically, pay their salary, right?
Yeah.
So, that transformation, is that, is, is that an issue in the city? Or are they walking towards doing something on that regards?
Like as far as allowing citizens to have a say in police reform?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, I will say that Coral Springs is generally very receptive to, you know, issues that are brought by the residents. I, I don't consider the city or even the police department here to be too resistant to calls for change. In part, that's why you, you do have civilians that serve on this new task force. But again, I can, to me. Sorry?
There is a task force.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, it's a recently established task force, which I think kind of proves my point that the city is pretty receptive to, you know, calls for change. But, you know, my, my, my biggest concern is we want to make sure that we have, you know, the right people calling for the right kind of reform because public safety is, it's a sensitive issue. And, you know, we do need to listen to activists and, and racial justice is very important. But again, reform needs to be specific to what the needs of the city are.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like you have very ambitious goals in all of, in, in all of the, you know, the complexities and you're very well aware. How is this set up? Is it, is, is city, oh, sorry, city commissioner? I keep wanting to say council. Is city commissioner a full-time position with an actual salary that allows you to focus on this? Or are the candidates expected to carry on their professions simultaneously in order to make a living? How does that work?
Yeah, well, it, it is a part-time position with a part-time salary. That includes the mayor's position as well.
Wow.
So, you know, I don't see myself, you know, leaving my job as an attorney if I'm given the opportunity to, to serve as commissioner. So, I would, I would be doing it, you know, both at the same time. But the city is, is very accommodating to, to the commissioners and their jobs. And so, you know, it, it should be able to work out.
But they, they would have to be in order to encourage, you know, professionals to, to join the council. It's just, I just, I find that surprising though, given the size of the city and the complexities of the issues. You know, is that something that maybe the citizens of the city can get together and saying, hey, at least we should, you know, get some health insurance and a living wage for our councilmen or commissioners? But I mean, that's, that's, that's neither, neither here nor there. I think one of the things I heard you say though about, about the, you know, task force. And, and one of the things that I feel is missing from the debate is, is nuance and reason. And often, you know, and, and that's why I'm very glad to hear you talk about, you know, the different factors that go in. Because, you know, you had this movement, you know, defund the police. And of course, and that, you know, people are making it sound like it, it means, you know, just take everything away from them so they don't have the resources to show up. When, when in, in reality, you know, you know, they are being faced, police officers are being faced with situations that really they shouldn't be faced with often. And, and it's, it's a very difficult job. But I'm glad you, you see the nuance in these issues. I think that, that goes a long way to, to bringing the city together on that.
Yeah, public safety is, is a very sensitive issue. So, you have to approach it with, with reason and, and also being practical about it.
That's good. And you see, and, and there is a city, then there is a city. How, how big is the city police there in, in Coral Springs?
We have, we have a pretty large police department because like something like close to 200 police officers. And, you know, they, they do a respectable job. I mean, I don't, I don't have anything against them. I think that we have a, a fine police chief and, and, you know, Chief Perry, very receptive to, you know, calls for reform and things like that. But he's also very rational. And, you know, I have a lot of confidence in our police department. I, I do think that they do a good job overall.
Good to hear. No, we don't hear that very often. What, what are, what, what are those particular issues that, that Coral Springs is facing now under the pandemic? That, that, because Coral Springs is, is compared to the rest of the cities in the state, it's a very well-off city.
Yeah, relatively, yeah.
So, so a city like, like Coral Springs, what, what is it that, that citizens are more worried about in times like this? I, I guess obviously the economic impact of the, of the pandemic is getting us all in every city, every state. But, but in addition to that, what are the, what, what were the concerns before the pandemic? I just want to know that and now obviously after the pandemic.
Well, the, the concerns before the pandemic, you know, when it comes to economics and, you know, fiscal policy, things like that is, you know, are my taxes gonna go up again? What new assessments are gonna be levied against me? Are my existing assessments gonna go up? You know, Coral Springs is a, it's, it's a primarily working-class city. You have some affluent areas, but it's a, it's a predominantly working-class city. So, you know, taxes and things like that are always gonna be at the top of everybody's mind. Especially now with the pandemic, you know, we have this $5 million budget shortfall that we're gonna have to address. And I personally think that we have more than enough money to address not only the basic needs of, of, of the city and the residents, but to go even beyond that. And so, you know, like I said, as long as we're keeping a watchful eye on how we spend our tax dollars and that we're not, you know, spending it on, on things that we can at least do away with for a few years, then, you know, we can address this, this budget shortfall without necessarily having to raise people's taxes.
Hey, Nor, you're, you're from a generation, I, 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 God bless your youth. You're from a generation that, that are naturally more concerned with the environment than my generation, for example. Is Coral Springs going green or any, are taking any steps on going green? Is that something that is in the, in the, in the short side of the city? To, to do something about the environment and better our environment?
Yeah, well, we're actually very close to the Everglades, so we have to care about the environment. And, you know, you certainly have calls within the city to, you know, have the city go more green. I, I think climate change is above all else an infrastructure issue. I don't think that, you know, the, the construction of the buildings in our city is necessarily strong enough for, you know, to even to combat the effects of climate change, whether it's sea level rise or whatever issue, you know, that, that concerns the environment. And so, I think that future development and, and future construction in the city has to keep in mind, you know, the various environmental issues that, that, you know, come up here in South Florida. I think it can be addressed in large part by the infrastructure, not entirely, but in large part.
For example, the transport, the public transportation using the city, does the city have anything to do with it or that's something that is managed by the county?
Well, in, in large part, it's managed by the county. The county obviously has its roots that go, you know, in and out of the city. But, you know, there are opportunities for the city to get involved in that, whether it's, you know, increasing access to buses for certain communities or things like that. There, there are many ways for the city to get involved in that area.
But speaking, speaking of county though, you did work with the county for some, for a while? And you, so you have experience in, in dealing with the county on, on these kinds of transportation issues?
Yes. So, I clerked at the office of the County Attorney of Broward County, which is really the, the, the legal office for the county. And, you know, as, as a clerk, I, you know, researched and analyzed and studied any issue concerning the county, whether it was transportation, climate change, I mean, anything. So, you know, that, that, that is, you know, the kind of experience that I would bring as a, as a city commissioner, you know, you have to know what the city can do and what it can't do. And, and so jurisdiction is very important. And so, you know, I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to work at that office. I think that it will prepare me in large part to take on the role of city commissioner in November.
Nor, normally when we invite, like Norma said in the beginning, we, for every program, we invite everybody that is running for that particular seat to have also a, a voice and an opportunity to, to be interviewed and speak. In, in your races, the, is the first one that, that we got, like all three particular opponents being, being interested in, in, in joining us in our next program. We're very excited about it at Care Florida. I was talking to Norma before we, we started the program about how, how, how things have changed, how, how the, the candidates have an interest in participating in these forums of, of civil rights groups or, or minority-led projects, groups, or any. So, the, the candidates are listening more to those movements that are more grounded in, 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 in the places where there are needs, identify needs and social injustice and poverty in their, in their respective cities. Have you felt that? Have you felt that, that street wanting to interact with you and, and, and listen from you? What is it that you need to offer us? Is that happening even with this pandemic social distancing thing?
Yeah. I, you know, I would be, I would be surprised if none of the candidates, you know, accepted your invitation to come, to come and talk to you. I think you kind of have to. But I don't know, I just think as a, as a candidate, if I understood your question, you, you kind of have to be prepared to address anything that comes your way. And you should be prepared to talk to everybody. You know, the candidate, you have to be tolerant, you have to be accepting. You know, we, we have a pretty sizable Muslim community in Coral Springs. Maybe that has something to do with it. But in general, you know, you need to talk to everybody. You need to understand the interests of every community. It's part of being a, a good elected official.
Another, there's, are there any issues where all candidates coincide? That, oh, we all need, that is a problem in our city? And everybody is offering an approach to that particular problem where all of you coincide that is an identifiable problem in the city?
Well, I'll be honest with you. At this point, it's kind of hard to tell because I haven't really seen any specific policy proposals put out by the other candidates. I guess that kind of makes us different because, you know, I wanted my campaign to be very policy-oriented. I'm not really here to talk to people with, you know, vague language. I want people to know exactly what I stand for and, and what they're voting for when, when they're voting for me in November. But generally, from what I've seen in other races in previous years, you know, infrastructure is very important in Coral Springs. You know, the economy is very important. The environment is, is important. So, those are areas where, you know, you're typically gonna see a lot of agreement from the candidates as far as what we need to do and how we can get there.
Hey, I, 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 I'm a biker. I, I ride my bike on the weekends. I mean, the pedal bike, not the motorcycle. How's Coral Springs doing? Because Coral Springs happens to be in my vicinity. I'm not a resident of Coral Springs. I used to be a resident of Coral Springs. I, I do.
Come back.
I do frequently ride my bike in Coral Springs. How's, how's the Coral Springs doing with the bike lanes in, in, in the, in the streets that are jurisdiction of Coral Springs?
Well, we have bike lanes. You'll see them, you know, throughout the city. I, I tend to be very concerned about the, the safety of the bikers. You know, because they're so close to the road as, as you see. We actually have some trails where, you know, residents can go and ride their bikes. There's an area out. um, some trails where, you know, residents can go and ride their bikes. There's an area out near the Sawgrass Expressway. Um, it's not necessarily a paved area. It's like more of a rocky area. But you see, you know, residents out there all the time riding their bikes and it get, gets really beautiful, especially, you know, as the sun is uh, is setting. So, you know, there are definitely opportunities for, for residents to, ride their bikes, but of course you always wanna be safe, especially when you're out on the roads.
I- uh, is there any dream project for the city? You know, some cities have a dream project of having, I don't know, a new city center or, I don't know, a big project that is just uh, 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 in the long-term project for the city rather than in the next four or eight years, but a long-term project. Is there any eh, long-term projects that you envision the city embracing?
Yeah, I, I could talk about uh, two of them. The first is the Cornerstone Project, which is the new development project, um, that you're gonna see in the area where the walk is. I don't know if you remember the walk area?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Yeah, and you know, we're gonna, we can expect to have a, a movie theater and a bunch of different, you know, shops and businesses, um, for the residents. Uh, we're also gonna have some, some residential areas. That's really the biggest development project that you're gonna see happening in the city. Um, and you know, many people are excited about that. I'm excited about that. It's part of creating a new da- downtown in Coral Springs. Uh, which sounds kinda weird because you know Coral Springs is like a suburb. It's not, it's not like Fort Lauderdale or anything like that, but, but a lot of residents are excited about that. Um, and that's pretty much etched in stone. It's just a matter of time before that, big old building in, in that area is knocked down and, and construction begins. Um, you know, we have a lot of, of low-income housing in Coral Springs, uh, which I think is great. You know, I think one of the worst things to see happen is for someone to, to be living, you know, without a roof over their heads. Um, but I, I'd like to see the city, you know, somehow work with the developer community in the city and, um, take, you know, the low-income housing and, and rehabilitate it so that, um, the, the, uh, so that, you know, those areas kinda look uh, more like what the city looks like. The city has its own unique look. Uh, it's, we're very unique identity as a city and, it's part of the reason why so many families like to move here. Um, so, you know, uh, I, I'd like to see us, uh, you know, work with the developer community to, uh, improve the, the condition of low-income housing. And um, I think that if you negotiate things uh, well enough, you know, you can even get them to do it on their own dime.
Yeah, i- i- it is certainly possible and that's something that, that we, we elevate and dignify those, those uh, lower income communities to always be kept at the standard of the city and never be relegated to an area where later, uh, you see, you will see the developers approaching, but not with the spirit of helping the community and beautifying and strengthening the community, but rather to do a, a gentrification uh,
Yeah.
uh, project there. So, that's something that the city eh, eh, I'm glad you have it eh, the city have it as a, eh, in their scope. Uh, something very important to deal with because I believe that's, that's the death sentence of, of, of the cities is when you allow the gentrification to take place. Uh, and, and just disregard the, the, the working class, uh, as, uh, as, as part of, as part of the people entitled to enjoy eh, the, the, what the city, as a city has to offer though.
Definitely.
Eh, and it's happening in so many places, especially here in South Florida. And I will hate that to, uh, be happening or spreading uh, to, to other counties, right? And, and to the suburbs where like the city you're uh, hoping to represent. Norma?
Yeah, actually, I, you know, I've been listening to this and then of course, you know, I'm, I'm on the other side of Florida, so I, I know very little about the specific issues I've been to Coral Springs. But um, you know, the whole trend, I think in, in the United States now for, you know, suburbs or bedroom towns or whatever you wanna call it is that people are spending a whole lot more time there. You know, even, even during the day. So let's say the city of Miami, you know, I mean, you can see by the traffic, people are driving, or used to be driving down there to the big office buildings. They spend all day and then, you know, if they're lucky, they get to get home, uh, you know, in time to have dinner with their families. The day is over. The only time they spend in their cities usually was the weekend.
Yes.
Changing because, you know, families are now spending a lot more time, uh, you know, near where they live and people are working from home and, you know, the, how is, how is the city dealing with that? Because I think that could invigorate the city. I mean, in, in a great way where, all of a sudden there are like more people doing little stores or, or, you know, having local um, merchants, um, you know, spring up or it could, it could overwhelm the city. How, how is that happening in Coral Springs?
Well, I think that's a, a wonderful trend that we're seeing in the suburbs. Um, I haven't seen any specific policy proposals being put out by the city. Uh, but it would definitely be a good idea to do that just because many of the social problems that we deal with are caused by people, you know, having to work, you know, too far, too far away from the city. Um, you know, the, the more you could do within the city, the better. Uh, but yeah, I haven't really seen anything put out by the city o- on that right now, right? Like at this point.
Yeah, and this, that's also something that's happening in Tampa and I live in a, in a little city in Tampa Bay and a lot of the residents don't even know it's a separate city. Because they just moved there, you know, they go to the University of South Florida. I mean, the city is called Temple Terrace. Great little city, by the way.
Nice.
Uh, and we have, you know, and people are like, oh, we have a mayor, we have a city council because they're really more transient. And, and I, it's changing. I see that, you know, people are spending more time now in their cities and also looking around and going, where can I make a difference? Where can I bring myself into this? This whole concept and it's, it sounds like, you know, it would be invigorating um, to a city.
I agree.
Uh, that, that's just a comment. That was not, not so much a question, I guess.
Oh.
But I think people are looking also in their leadership uh, for, you know, and I think maybe that's why sometimes the candidates that say, that give vague messages, have uh, you know, uh, have an audience is because people are looking for, in a kind of a hope. People are looking for, for a reason to get out of bed in the morning, particularly right now being quarantined and, and uh, so you know, you, I think your message bringing, you know, focusing on the future and developing that, um, that would have to be um, encouraging to folks that are, you know, are looking forward to, you know, um, you know, joining the workforce again or, or, you know, establishing a business. Have you seen a lot of local businesses? I mean, it downtown go out of business? In uh, in Coral Springs, like restaurants and, and merchants? And, and what, what would the city be able to do to give them hope?
Yeah, unfortunately, we've had some businesses, including some that have been, operating in a city for so many years, um, just closed down because of the, the, economic issues that have resulted from the pandemic. Uh, the city has been doing its best to try to help our small business community. One of the big things that they're doing right now is they're offering uh, you know, business loans uh, to, you know, businesses to try and, and, and stay, you know, up and running and, um, y- you know, they're also trying to promote uh, uh, or encourage, you know, more residents to uh, buy local as a way of, of keeping businesses um, open. I mean, I personally, um, even before I even, you know, decided to run, I, I always wanted to prioritize our small businesses and, you know, shop local instead of having to go out. Um, and I thi- I think that's the right thing to do.
What, what kinds of shops are there? Like, are you talking about small grocery shops or, I mean, cause, huh, uh, what kinds of, what kinds of businesses are affected?
Uh, the ones that I've seen have been mostly like restaurants. Um, so there, there was like a, a really nice breakfast place that closed down recently. Um, there was like a donut shop that closed down. Um, so it's, it's businesses like that, but, you know, many of these businesses are run by residents. Um, and you know, that's just, a loss of business that goes with, with uh, you know, businesses closing down. You know, I, I worry about, you know, how the city looks when, you know, you hear of a new business, you know, closing down. And so, um, I think that, you know, the, the city commission needs to do what, whatever it can to, to make sure that these businesses stay up and running. The best that it can.
One thing that is, I think it's not such a stigma anymore because everybody knows why they're closing down, you know, and so maybe that's, and, and, and people tend to take it very, you know, of course it is very personal, but people tend to mean it as a, like a reflection on their ability to run a business. And, and just like now, we're, we're seeing that, you know, the unemployed are not lazy loafers. They are really people who lost their jobs. And I think that, maybe that change in, in consciousness uh, will hopefully maybe pull the community together. Are there as, strong civic groups in, in um, Coral Springs that uh, kind of gather the, the natives or, or, you know, the restless natives in, in uh, in, in some kind of a common goal for this or i- is it something left up for, for the politicians to deal with?
Um, so the, this, the city commission has been primarily the, they've been the main actors that have, you know, tried to um, look for ways to help our small business community. I, I think the, the, uh, best actor though would be like our Chamber of Commerce. They're, they're the ones that look out for the uh, the interests of, of businesses. And so, uh, I'm sure that they would have a lot of ideas to offer, you know, in that respect.
Nora, I got two questions. One, one from me, uh, and another one from the public. Uh, the one from me is, uh, the, I know that some cities do have a, uh, the commission, the commissioners assigned by geographical areas in their cities, right?
Yeah.
Uh, 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 that's not the case in Coral Springs, so.
It's not. They're all at-large seats, which means that uh, my election uh, will be open to the more than eighty thousand residents who are registered to vote in Coral Springs.
Okay, and then uh, how many uh, seats are up for election on the third? All the seats? The three commissioners and the, and the mayors or?
It'll be my seat, which is the open seat, and then it will be uh, seat five, which is uh, held by an incumbent currently. That, that seat is also being contested, so it would be two total.
So two, two seats of commissioners up for election in the day of the elections?
Yes, which is November third, yeah.
Okay, I have another questions and this one is from, from our public. It says, in Coral Springs, is there a struggle between commissioners as to people who want more real estate development versus those who want more environmental protections? The more people move in the, in the city, the more strains on, strains on the resources, waste disposal, water, electricity, wildlife habitat. So, what, uh, i- is, is, is that struggle happening of those two interests in the city?
Yeah, and, and you see that struggle everywhere where you have a real estate and development community. Uh, I think it's a great thing that we have a thriving developer community in the city. Um, here's the thing, you know, in politics and I almost don't like to say this, um, but i- it's, it's kind of true. You know, in politics, everything is a business. Um, and you know, that's especially the case, you know, when it comes to development issues. Uh, and I say that because, you know, these developers, they're, they're business people and they're smart and yes, they do look after their interests, but, you as a commissioner have to, you know, look for ways to, you know, bridge that gap and come to uh, a compromise that, you know, a dignified compromise that, you know, will not just make developers, you know, happy, but that will also, um, you know, meet the needs of, of whatever that development project is supposed to, you know, achieve and at the same time not create or exacerbate existing problems. So if you look at it from like a business perspective and you look at it from a negotiation standpoint more specifically and from a standpoint of compromise, then, i- it'll be easier to, to solve a lot of these problems that, that come up as a result of that, that back and forth that you tend to see between, you know, developers and, and residents. But, you know, I, I think a lot of this is certainly achievable.
Are, are those developers um, usually locals or are they people who are just seeing an opportunity? Because, you know, I've lived in Florida cities where it, it's almost like you come in, you make the cash and you go home. So I always thought maybe the developers should be people who are home in Coral Springs. Do you see that or are, are those more outside forces that are interested?
No, we definitely do have local developers. Some of them, you know, even live in Coral Springs. Um, which I, I, you know, I think is great, but, but yeah, you're right. You know, developers, they're business people and they do look after their interests. Um, but that's where the city commissioners need to step in and, you know, think about how they can work with, you know, our friends in the developer community to, um, you know, achieve that compromise that I was talking about where everyone is happy and at the same time, you're not, you're not, you're not creating new problems or, or worsening existing problems in the city. So that, that takes, you know, a good degree of judgment. Uh, we certainly don't want commissioners who are beholden to just developers. You know, we want commissioners who are gonna be as objective as possible and, and make the best decisions on behalf of everyone, which is, you know, really what the residents expect of you when, when they vote for you and when you take office. So you need to really live by that. I have not, I don't think I've taken any money from developers, by the way.
That's good. Hey, thank you, Nora. Thank you for your time today. Uh, uh, and Norma, will you have a, a, a last comment and questions for Nora? And Nora also, if you could, uh, after that, uh, answer, uh, also do a closing comment?
Well, now you do the closing comment. You're, you're the local, but um, I think it's just, I, I admire anyone who puts themselves out there in, in today's environment a- and, and takes a stand and runs for office. And, and you know, that's city council, county commission or city commission county. Do you still call them county commission?
I'm not gonna hold you to it.
But I admire that because, you know, it takes, it takes so much not only time and energy, but it takes, takes almost like a little bit of, of a thick skin in, in today's environment there because, you know, social media can be mean and people can be anonymous and people say things anonymously, they probably would never say if they really put their name on it. So, I just wanted to uh, congratulate you and for, for your decision to run and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you and thank you for your time. Um, you know, these are great, you know, candidate forums that are being put out. Um, it's important that people watch these forums. Um, you know, because that's how you're gonna learn about the candidates. You can always find me on social media. But um, you know, it's important that people tune into, to these forums because, you know, your, your vote certainly counts and um, you know, whoever is gonna be on that commission in November, hopefully it's me, um, is going to influence the direction of the city moving forward. Um, and that's especially important, especially, you know, here in Coral Springs. We're in a state of influx. Um, so uh, this is definitely an important reason and I think it's one to watch out for too. And I don't say that just because I'm running. I say that because I mean it.
So, thank you, Nora. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Norma, for, for co-hosting with me. It's always a pleasure being with you in my programs. Uh, Elections Twenty Twenty here in South Florida. Uh, uh, Nora, uh, we, we, uh, we are proud of, of you as a, as a wo- young woman, uh, professional, uh, running uh, for office as we are proud of so many other candidates that are also uh, 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 legitimately wanting to serve. Uh, uh, obviously not looking to enrich themselves when you have positions that are part-time positions that you cannot dedicate the, the hundred percent of your time to the city. Eh, i- 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 it is really a, a, I see it as a, as a service. Uh, another way of ser- of true service. I do have some problems with, with mayors making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, calling that a, 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 a public service. Uh, but uh, and with chauffeur and, and card for their meals and, and, and paid expenses when traveling. Uh, uh, so they, they, but, but when you serve in cities like, like, like Coral Springs, the smaller cities, uh, uh, I do uh, see that in, in all candidates, a, a true spirit to serve and not, not really eh, eh, looking for, to enrich themselves or, or for their own, but rather for the well-being of the city and the community. Thank you again, Nora. Uh, thank you, Norma. Assalamualaikum, warahmatullah to everybody. And just follow us. Uh, we do have a program, an upcoming program next Sunday. Uh, uh, it's not an Elections Twenty Twenty, but a very interesting programs uh, that we are holding every Sunday at five P M. So stay tuned. Uh, salamualaikum, warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Take care. Bye-bye.